I call to order the monthly meeting for the month of April for the Merritt City Council. City of Tontitown has Councilman Sam Beddard lead us in the platte.
I'd like to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Just a short announcement before we begin. We had a accident in town this afternoon. A thirteen-year-old girl was crossing Baltimore Street and got struck by a car. It was taken to the hospital and the latest reports are that she's going to be okay. But I bring this to your attention just simply so that you might keep her in your prayers tonight. And... Jim, where did it happen?
Palm Gardner, Palm Gardner in West Baltimore Street.
Palm Gardner in West Baltimore Street.
She was airlifted out.
At the light.
She didn't go to shock trauma. She went to Johns Hopkins.
Right, and she was conscious.
So, never liked to hear things like that, so... All right, let's move on with our agenda this evening. The first item is to approve the minutes for March the ninth and March the fourteenth, regular meetings, and March the thirtieth, budget workshop. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve any or all of those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We had a tight bell, I guess, on the agenda tonight in that it mentions that this is the workshop, and of course, it's not. It's the council meeting to take actions on the items that we discussed during the workshop, which occurred last Wednesday. And one of those features, new features of that meeting, is to allow public comments on items that are not on the agenda prior to discussing the agenda items. And because it's listed on the agenda, I would ask if anyone from the public has any comments they'd like to make on items that are not appearing on the agenda tonight. All right, hearing nothing, we'll move into the next statement, which is simply to ask the council members if they have any conflicts of interest with anything that might be on the agenda tonight.
No, sir.
No.
My consensus, that's not. We have a number of ordinances and resolutions to either introduce or adopt tonight, so we'll begin through, going through those. The first item for introduction is ordinance twenty-three dash two thousand sixteen, the fiscal year real property and personal property tax rate. Does anyone care to make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-three two thousand sixteen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to say that it's my opinion that we should keep the revenues the same, not just the rate the same. Effectively, by, because of the increase in revenue that's come in, effectively leaving the rate the same, which this ordinance does, would effectively reduce taxes. And I pledged when I ran for office that I would not vote for increases in the taxes. So I'd encourage us not to do that.
Do you have any...
But go to the constant rate.
Do you have any, do you have any recommendations of what we could eliminate from the budget to...
I do.
To do that?
You want to talk about that now?
Well, I mean, prices go up. We've got our budget at a merit increase for our employees, and we've got costs that rise just the normal course of business. And with less revenue, we'll have to reduce services, that's all. I just wonder if you have a service you'd like to reduce.
In the recent meeting, we agreed to hire a new person in the office, over my objection. And then, there's a one point five percent COLA increase. And I got, since our last meeting, the list of salaries that are here. And I don't think most of Tontitown residents have received an increase. So I think there's a lot of money there. Also, there's a massive amount of shifting, costs of the water sewer rates. I would like to readjust all of that in order to lower water and sewer rates.
Okay.
So I think there's a lot of effort there. I don't think there's any need to raise the amount of revenue and go with the constant rate. And when I vote on that, I'll vote against raising the amount of revenue to the city government through the property taxes.
Okay, just for clarification, there's some thirty thousand dollar increase that results in the, keeping the tax rate the same as it was last year. So does anyone have any other discussion?
Can I just ask a question? If the, if the tax rate was to be lowered, what kind of effect would that have on the overall budget itself?
You'd have to start fresh. I mean, unless you'd simply go line by line and start cutting things out.
The amount would be, as the mayor just said, thirty thousand dollars. Now, if...
Well, that translates to about a half a penny, is what that translates to.
Excuse me.
For our budget, it'll actually be eighty-two thousand. And that's because we didn't take the increase last year. So the difference of what we budgeted last year and this year, the difference is over eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars, because we didn't increase it last year.
Last year, we left approximately fifty-some thousand dollars on the table, didn't take it.
I think it's got, it's important to note that because of these stormwater management arrangement we made with the county, where they pay eighty percent of the cost of upgrading the ponds and whatever else, that still cost us in the neighborhood of sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars.
It's about, that's about what we got.
Right.
And about fifty thousand last year, with no increase in revenues.
So all this money is doing is recovering half of what it cost us to contribute to stormwater management.
Plus...
Right.
Plus, Angela, if you recall, there also, the county has taken out for another position.
That's right. So it covers that, too.
My other thing here...
It's not, it's not money that is in excess.
We're not going to put it in the bank.
It's not clear money.
My question is, if we're going to, if you want to switch the money that's been appropriately put into the utility fund, back to the general fund, and then also decrease the revenue in the budget on the, on the general fund, you're putting it even deeper in the hole. Because you can't do both.
Now, I just wanted to be clear to the citizens of Tontitown, that we're increasing the amount of revenue we take from the working-class people, eighty-two thousand dollars, that's all. That if we enact this ordinance, which is fiscal year, ordinance twenty-three two thousand sixteen, the amount of revenue that Tontitown city government takes from the taxpayers is going to go up eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, which is carried from our financial...
I understand.
I'm opposed to that.
Understand the tax rate hasn't changed. It's simply a result of assessments changing. That's why we have more revenue. For the last eight years, assessments have decreased. So for, through the last eight years, we've been dipping into the savings funds to provide operating capital for our budget. This is the first year that we've been able to see a positive impact on our budget from our assessments, first year, first time in eight years. So is there any further discussion?
Well, I'd just say that I've been watching this since I've been an adult, paying taxes. And one year, the state raises the assessments, and then the next rate, the municipal or county government raises the rates. So that generally, the size of government keeps growing and growing and growing. And this year, if we enact this ordinance, it'll go up eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. I'm opposed to that. I think there's a lot of room in the budget to go through this and come up with savings, especially, I, what's the cost, what's the estimated cost of the COLA increase, for example? Do you have a number on that? For all these employees? The highest-paid employees are paid a large amount of money. And I imagine that is a pretty substantial increase. You might have a number. I don't have a number. I just know that one percent of the bottom line on this sheet of salaries is a lot of money.
They went for years with no increase. You can't keep milking the employees, either.
Well, I don't think it's milking first, not to give a raise.
They are people, just like anybody else. They have families. They went for a long time with no increase. They did not complain. It's time we started to compensate them for the work they do. And I, and I'll tell you why. Look at that, look at that salary scale, and I'll tell you, there's not many people that are highly paid.
I also would say that I've spoken with the majority of the county commissioners about the new soil conservation position. And essentially, the truth about that is that if the county is in compliance, you don't need to hire an extra person to get more in compliance. So the fact that we might not hire an extra person is still a possibility at the county level, because the county is in compliance with all the stormwater management.
That's, that's with the county.
Not even on the table.
We just heard from the city manager...
We don't have anything to do with that.
That part of the revenue that comes up with this figure is that share of the cost between the municipalities, six thousand dollars.
It's money that we don't have, and that we won't get because they need another person.
We won't get it because we're giving it to the county to hire new officials.
I think, I think it's time to move on. Does anyone else have a question on this?
Did you have an answer to the councilman's question?
Yes.
Thank you.
The total increase from last year's salary to this year is over fifty-one thousand, but that also includes the new person in finance.
So that's half of that is that new person.
New person.
So it's about twenty-some thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that's spread over, how many employees? Forty, forty-seven, is that correct?
About that, minus mayor and council.
Right.
All right. Anyone else have any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Opposed, I'm opposed to that.
So carry.
That's an introduction, notes under introduction.
No, that's not a vote.
Now, that's, that's being introduced.
Okay.
Right.
Ordinance twenty-four sixteen, fiscal year water and sewer rate. Again, this is a proposed increase of three and a half percent. We had originally proposed five percent, but that's been reduced to three and a half percent in order to meet budget guidelines. Does anyone care to make a motion to introduce that ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Out of curiosity, and I was considering this over the weekend, with the projected rate of increase being cut from five percent to three point five percent, is there like a general idea, or maybe like a vague estimation, about how the next several years will play out, being that we were able to cut the projected rate this year?
Zero. Hello? I didn't hear you.
I said it should be zero. It should be zero increase this year.
Okay. Anyway, basically, this year is the first year we've actually seen, as a matter of fact, even with that three point five, you'll see a bottom line of still twenty-four thousand dollars to the plus. It's the first time we've seen anything like that in five, six years, at least. The, what it really see, to me, what it's indicating is, is that we've been staying the course with the Davenport report, and that seems to be coming to fruition now. So I expect, well, there's a couple things. With growth starting, we should probably be, you know, better off next year than we are this year.
And again, the utility fund is now self-supporting.
It is one-hundred percent self-supporting. In the past, what we were doing, we were technically, if you remember, we had a one-point-five-million-dollar, is it one-point-five, debt from the, that's, general fund owes.
It was about three million.
Oh, twice what I said. Three million dollar debt that the general fund owes the...
The other way.
The other way. You're telling he owes the general.
That's right. Okay, so what basically we've been doing is, is we've stopped that subsidizing with the salaries, and it is now self-supporting.
And I think, you know, a lot was said about the Davenport report, but for about five, six years, we've been following a well-documented plan of gradual increase until we could break even.
It's right on track.
And it's right on time. So I think that plan has really worked out to what it was supposed to be.
I can't wait to see what next year's going to bring. I think we are going to be in a better position than we are right now. That, that could be a good time.
Well, again, what's going to really help us is the growth that's occurring, because that means more people are buying...
Right.
Water and sewer services.
Mr. Mayor, regarding this, these comments that have been made, I had asked the city manager at the last meeting on Wednesday to go, and he went back to page eighteen and showed the amount of revenue we're projecting for where they cut down all the forests in my neighborhood. They cut all the trees down in my neighborhood. And when those revenues were going to come in for the water bill, for the next entire year, we have zeros in those categories. I don't think that's a realistic assessment.
That's because, that's because the growth hasn't occurred.
That's for the hookup phase.
Well, I think that, put it zero for the entire year, and then, and then not counting on any of that for growth, and then shifting three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars from the general fund in this particular year is the reason you have to raise water rates at all. I think it's appalling. If the costs, as they come in, as they've come in through the budget, show that we don't have to raise water rates this year, why in the world would we do all that shifting in one year? Why would we count zero for new, new growth?
Well, let me...
It's a good excuse to raise taxes.
Well, first, it's not taxes. Second, let me explain why there's not growth. Mr. Mayor, may I say something real quick?
Certainly.
To the gallery, when we are conducting business here, I would appreciate that you be respectful and not throw in the comments. You'll have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting, but it's extremely distracting and rude for it to continue to occur. Thank you. Now, as I was saying about the growth, councilman, if we account for growth, if we budget for growth, and they pull out of the project, we are short at the end of the year. And that can't happen. That's bad business.
That's not likely to happen.
Doesn't matter if it's likely or not, there's a possibility.
What's likely to happen is a great deal of revenue is going to come into the new housing.
With growth, you don't know you have it until it is in your hands. Otherwise, you cannot rely on that. Developers can fold at any moment.
If two big things are happening, we're counting zero increase in utility fund revenue for the next year, based on the growth that we know is happening in my neighborhood, and secondly, we're shifting three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars worth of things. We never did that before, any other budget, but we're doing it now. We're shifting those into the utility fund, including fifty percent of the town managers, ninety percent of a couple people downstairs in the office. So when you pay your water bill, you're not paying for water and sewer anymore, you're paying for office staff at seventeen East Baltimore Street.
Don, I thought I explained this on Wednesday night, that the reason we transferred the funds back into the water sewer department was because it's an enterprise fund, it has to stand on its loan, and we cannot have the taxpayers, the property taxpayers, subsidizing the function of the water and sewer department. It has to be the users of the water sewer department that pay that bill. And they're not, they haven't been doing that. That's why we've transferred the, the costs that were, that were sub, that, over to the general fund in order to subsidize that fund. That can't be permitted.
Have a little colloquy about that. Why this year? To do it all this year?
Because this year, we have the funds. We have, because of the...
You have the funds not to raise water rates, that's my point.
Well, I don't know how to get through, Don. I mean, I just, it's very clear to me.
Let me take one, just real quick. You know, I guess it was about three, maybe four years ago, we were in, actually budgeting for growth. And at that time, we budgeted for fifty units to be built. And what happened was, the net result of that was that we, actually, I think, less than ten homes were built that year. So...
Two thousand and eight happened, that's what happened.
Okay, what, what, what happened was, is we put that money in the budget, and we spent it. We spent money that we didn't have. So we had to go and pull funds out of our reserve. So we learned not to put growth in the budget in that fashion. We allow the, we allow a, the growth money to come into the budget, I mean, it's there, you see it pointed out on eighteen, page eighteen.
Yes, you did, you went to it on Wednesday.
Correct. And so that's the place where that money goes. And at the end of the year, you will have the opportunity to make decisions on what to do with that growth money. So the fact is, we learned several years ago not to inject growth into the budget, but to account for it to come in as a flow. Otherwise, you're spending money that you don't have, or potentially don't have. And it wrecked our budget that year.
Well, not only that, if you remember, maybe three, four months ago, you voted to keep the growth money to pay for capital projects, so that we don't have to borrow money in the future. Okay? The cap, the growth for the last year, we're getting to a point where we can buy the press pretty soon, without going in debt. Any money we get from now, we can start repairing the water problem that we have out on Winter? West?
Westview.
Westview Street. We can start looking at sleeving the sewers on the old part of town that we didn't get to when we did street skate. We can look at replacing the water lines. We've got a use for that money. We can put it away. We don't have to borrow. We got twenty million dollars of debt in the utility fund, we don't need any more.
Well, my point was, regarding...
We've had water tower renovations, much in the last eight years.
Mr. Mayor, was that, that on Wednesday, we heard that when we, if we do get increases in the growth, he hadn't planned on putting any money into the water bill, but he planned on, paying down debt, but he planned to put that in the capital fund.
No, I never said that. I never said that.
You didn't say that in answering my questions.
No, I never said that.
That when we get money...
I never said we were paying down debt.
It's, it's simply, it's simply an ant in a grasshopper story, that's all it is. And that's what we... It's simply an ant in a grasshopper story.
Mr. Mayor, call the question.
All right, all in favor of introducing ordinance twenty-four dash two thousand sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I'm opposed to that. We don't need to raise any...
All right, next is ordinance twenty-five dash two thousand sixteen, which is the fiscal year operating budget. Would somebody care to make a motion to approve the introduction of the operating budget?
That's what he said, yep.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would say that approval of this budget with a shifting of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars is a shell game. It's a sham to allow three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars worth of increased spending, that if you shift the money into the water rate...
I'm really sorry you don't understand this.
I certainly understand, I'm being my...
I wish, I wish you would really study this and try to get a grip on what you're looking at.
Why can't you say I don't understand it? That's foolishness.
You obviously don't.
I certainly understand that it is, the county commissioners did the same thing when they raised the tipping fee, and they actually said it, Dennis Frazier said, "We're moving this money into a fee, so that we actually have additional money in the general fund that we can spend." And that's exactly what's happening. It allows you to increase spending by three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars if you free up the money in the operating budget and move it into the utility fund, and then puts the burden on the people who buy water and sewer. I think the water and sewer rate's too high. I had two people come to me this week outraged at the current level of water and sewer rates. They've given me their bill. I have some emails about people threatening to move out of the town because of the extremely high water bills. And to shift operating expenses into the water and sewer fund is not only irresponsible, but it's cynical, because it actually increases the ability of the general fund to be increased by the amount that you shift.
Okay.
The same way they did with the tipping fee at the county.
We don't, we don't have anything to do with that.
It's the same identical illustration. I've said the same thing to the county commissioners, that we didn't need to raise the tipping fee, and we don't need to raise the water and sewer rates in Tontitown. We have adequate revenues to pay current costs without the shifting of money and without these increases in salaries.
The next item for, is for adoption, and that's resolution...
Mr. Mayor, are we going to vote to introduce that?
Yes, we have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote for that. All in favor of introduction of the budget, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign.
I'm opposed to introduce a budget that raises water and sewer rates in two thousand sixteen.
Next is resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-two, the water allocation for April two thousand sixteen. Is there anyone care to make a motion to introduce that resolution?
That's, no, we're not...
There's a second?
We're adopting these.
That's for adoption, right?
I'm sorry, this is for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. Next is a charter resolution, CR two thousand sixteen oh one, that will allow us to remove an elected official from office for impropriety. Anyone care to make a motion to introduce that resolution?
To adopt.
It's not, it's not introduction. We are, we're now into past.
Adopting.
All right, I'm sorry. Anybody make, care to make a motion to adopt that charter resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would, I would encourage the council not to adopt a, the resolution to remove elected officials. Under the Tontitown charter, it says the council shall have the power to pass such ordinances not contrary to the constitution and not contrary to the laws of the state of Maryland. And the fact is, there is no provision in laws in the state of Maryland for moving people for a censure. The thing I brought up, and I talked to two constitutional attorneys since we last met, and they asked me to remind the council of the idea of a bill of attainder, that if you vote to, if you vote to censure somebody, it's a conflict of interest for you to vote to then remove somebody, because you're acting in a quasi-judicial manner. And what would happen in that situation is there'd be no opportunity for a day in court for you to be able to have a judicial thing. An example was given of, of one of the Baltimore city officials that was removed, a motion was made to remove the office, but the difference in that is it went to the state attorney's office. Y'all can't just remove people from office because you don't like them. And that is essentially what this bill would do. We should not adopt this. We should send it, as I made a motion two months ago, to send it to a constitutional attorney for a written opinion about whether or not this violates the constitution's principle of a bill of attainder. You cannot accuse someone and then vote to remove them at the same time. It's unconstitutional. They also advised me that the, in order to have standing on an injunction on such an activity, you'd have to actually go through it. So it might be a possibility, before you could get an injunction on somebody that would violate the constitution, that somebody would actually have to be injured and be a party. You wouldn't have standing in the court to file injunction, or to sue a town or county for damages until the time that the actual incident had happened. So when a person enacts an unconstitutional law, or a body, like a town, or a city, or a county, the actual court case comes when a person is actually removed in an unconstitutional manner. It's my opinion that adopting this is unconstitutional, and it would result in a challenge in the courts, that would result in an injury to the, to the people of Tontitown. Not only does the, do we pay invoices for our city attorney at ten thousand dollars a month, like I brought up at the last meeting, but the fact is that, that going forward with this would, would almost certainly result in that. And I want the people to understand, this is a charter amendment. Now, when did the idea come to amend the charter?
You're tending to repeat yourself, you're repeating yourself.
No, no, that's a new point. Why, this is not just an ordinance, this is amending the city charter to give a broad new power to the council. Why, why do we want to do that?
There are times where it may be necessary. I think for future thought, it is appropriate.
If you want to vote to get, you can do that.
I can tell you one reason. It's only been a year since we've had an ethics requirement put on us by the state, that we have to file a financial disclosure law, or affidavit. And if we do not file that, then you can't run. But if we find errors in that, or if you violate that while you're in office, we have no way to remove that person from office. It, then it would make that financial disclosure statement invalid, because we can't get, can't get rid of the person.
No penalty.
No penalty. This puts a penalty in it. This also, if you start violating your council, or your county council, or city council privileges, we have no way of penalizing. That's something that had gone on for years. I've had people tell me on the street that, hey, it's about time we've done this, okay? Because we, you just have no way to remove an elected official. You have a way to remove anybody else.[1782.16] It's in the employee handbook, but an elected official, we don't have anything. You've got to have something.
Mr. Mayor, there's good reasons for that. Essentially, uh, the, the phrase that Councilman Zambetti just said is that we don't have any provision to remove a person like that. Being elected to the, the county, the city council is not a privilege granted by the city council. It's a privilege. I had five, 500 people voted me into office.
How many?
And, uh, I don't know what the number is. Do you know the number?
You made it by five votes, I think. It wasn't 500.
It was-
Okay.
Hundreds of people, let's say. Like Donald Trump said, millions and millions of votes. It's a, quite a number of people voted that. And it's not a privilege to serve on this council granted by the council. And essentially, if you adopt this ordinance, that's the big problem constitutionally, is that you give the council the right to, for example, as you said just a moment ago, to determine whether people can file and run for office. The council doesn't have that right. That was the ethics ordinance.
I also see where it gives registered voters the ability to remove someone from office. Are you opposed to that as well?
Uh, I, I, I don't see the reason for recall. I think that every, every, uh, there's no recall provisions in the Maryland State Constitution.
Yet the senate did it. The Maryland State Senate did. They removed somebody.
Well, I know they do.
Right.
I knew they do.
So that was unconstitutional as well?
This is not the Maryland State Senate.
Again, we've had this discussion Wednesday night, so we don't need to have it again tonight.
No, the point I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor, is that-
You said all this stuff Wednesday, though.
The point I wanted to make regarding this is that it's not a privilege to serve on the county, council granted by the council. It's a, it's a right to serve on the council because the citizens elected you to the council in the United States of America.
But if you, if you commit a criminal act, okay, there's no way to get you off the council.
This is not a proposal that talks about criminal acts. It talks about a censure.
Sure does. No, it talks about a whole bunch of things, censure being on it.
It talks about criminal actions also, but you're essentially violating the provision, the constant provision of the bill of attainder by saying that you can convict somebody of a censure and then later remove them from office because you don't like that.
After it's over-
So that's unconstitutional.
After it's over, if you feel, you can take it to court.
I call the question.
Okay.
All right. The question's been called. All those in favor of adoption charter resolution, CR 2016-01, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign?
I'm opposed. I think it subjects Tonty Town to lawsuits, and it's a horrible idea.
Move on to ordinance number 20-2016, campaign finance. This is up for adoption. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve campaign finance ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would, I would like to say a word about the campaign finance before you ram that through also, that the campaign finance, uh, bill as drafted is specifically aimed toward one organization that's located in Tonty Town that has P.O. Box 520. And in the discussions that we had here, it came up over and over and over again, we have to have this, we have to have this for this reason. I think that's a good enough reason, I want to read it into the record, uh, for, for bringing a constitutional challenge against the campaign finance thing that violates Citizens United against, uh, the Federal Election Commission, as I told the town attorney. And so that people who respect the Constitution on this council should vote against the adoption of this campaign finance report because it opens up Pandora's Box of harassing organizations in the town that contribute to campaigns, or groups of people like No Cannabis in Carroll, as I said on Wednesday, that might want to be politically active. That's un-American, it's unethical, and it's irresponsible to adopt an ordinance like, ordinance of that nature.
All we're, all we're trying to do, and this is what you're missing unfortunately, is-
Not missing it. I know what's being done to me. We're being shafted, and I know what's being done.
Why is it being done? Why do you protest too vehemently, my friend? You really do. Are you afraid of what you've done in the past? That you're not gonna be able to do in the future?
I don't wanna-
Why are you protesting so much?
I don't want to scroll a history of veto onto the law books-
You don't want any-
-that harasses people for generations to come.
You're the one that says, talks about transparency, and then when transparency is apparent, you try to vote it down and kill it. You do it every time, my friend. I don't know why, but you do. You haven't done anything-
Most people in town have not read this campaign finance ordinance and taken it to attorneys like I have. And essentially, what I'm talking about is some real serious difficulty with the fact that it was brought up in a circumstances related to a specific organization, and secondly, that it violates already established provisions, not only in the Constitution, but also in law. Municipalities, uh, can require report, reporting requirement for campaign contributions, but they can't limit the amount of contributions per individual.
Yes, they can. The federal government does it, the state government does it. And what you took out of the Citizens United case, I don't believe you took accurately because I read that, and I did not get at all what you've been spouting through here about it.
Bernie Sanders is really upset with that case, for good reason, because it actually, it actually does say, it actually does restrict people from ability to limit those contributions. I gave a couple examples about somebody giving you a hundred dollar bill.
It's not saying they can't give you money. Now, the form that they give you money-
That's all. It's just transparency. That's not stopping anybody from giving anybody money.
If you're opposed to the citizens knowing where money came from-
Let everybody know about it, so you don't do it under the table. That's the only thing this is, is transparency.
If you don't want the citizens to know where money came from, then you have a bigger problem.
I don't mind that as much as I mind limiting the amounts of money that are given, and then leaving specific rules about, uh, how you can, how a person can spend the money, or who's responsible for somebody spending the money. I gave a great example about Joe Vigliotti, of receiving some support from Defend Life at a previous meeting. How can he know to report that? He would be brought up on an ethics commission, you could have people supporting you you don't even know about. But under this ordinance, uh, someone who's eager to cause mischief around election time, run that over to the ethics commission, try to get a finding of a violation. And the violations are stiff in this bill.
Again, we've, we've spent a good deal of time Wednesday night discussing these very same words, so I, I don't think we need to discuss it again tonight.
Well, the reason I want to-
So, the only thing I, 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 I think your, your reminders are good, to remind us all what we talked about, and we did that. But we've had a weekend to think about it. So now we can vote with, with full knowledge of what we're voting for. So I will call the question, was anybody, anybody who liked the-
I don't think the mayor can call a question, only the council can.
Well, the order is 21-2016, or 20-2016-
Jim.
Campaign finance.
I, just a quick comment. Uh, you know, my name was brought up, uh, in terms of different organizations supporting me. I believe in this piece of legislation, there is a method where if I'm unaware that a, a group or an individual is, is supporting me, I will not be responsible for their actions.
Correct.
And then on top of that, if an organization wants to support me, or an individual wants to support me, I would have no problem being transparent about it, right? It'd been mentioned in a meeting a couple of months ago, that, you know, you should be proud of the people and the organizations and the groups that support you. And I have no problem with that.
That's very good.
All right. All in favor of ordinance, adoption of ordinance 20-2016, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No, I'm not in favor of this.
Okay.
My goodness. I can't believe the lack of respect you have for-
Next is ordinance 21-2016, the cannabis dispensary overlay. And to give some of the folks a background on what we're talking about here, uh, is, is something we've been talking about for the last four or five months. That will allow us to restrict legal cannabis retail operations if they should ever come to town. It will prevent them from distributing their products in, uh, a general business district, but restrict them rather to a particular area, uh, that would be less conducive to that type of business. So, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt ordinance 21-2016?
So moved.
In, in the form of-
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Can I ask a question about it?
Certainly.
Yeah, we had discussed at length of Wednesday of adding growers and processors to this ordinance. I don't, uh, uh, the version before us doesn't make that change and add those in. Was there gonna be a discussion on doing that, or after that put before you move?
Well, I mean, I guess a motion, motion would be in order to add them if you wanted to do that.
Well, I would like to make a motion therefore, to add growers and processors to the ordinance, and then to increase the setbacks from 500 to 1,000 feet, and then also to remove the word "safe and effective" from the ordinance, because no, no sale or growth or distribution of marijuana is a safe and effective treatment in the form they're gonna do it under the Cannabis Commission. These are not prescription pills that you buy at the pharmacy that are FDA approved. They are smokeable marijuana. That's ended. Our own congressman stood at the, uh, at the Thunderhead and said, "Shame on any government that enacts a bill like, uh, like the cannabis bill, uh, just for the sake of money."
Well, there's two things there. Two things there. First off, this is not for the sake of revenues. The city does not get anything out of this. The state are the ones who collect the taxes and the fees and all of that. We have no financial gain as a city from this endeavor. Secondly, in regard, that's fine. In regard to changing it from 500 feet to 1,000 feet, that cannot be done. The reason is this, there would be no space that they could actually open it, and that would open us up to the lawsuit. And when it goes for litigation, all of this becomes nonusable until they decide it, which could be three or four years of us having no zoning requirements, which means they could open up right across the street from City Hall.
You know, maybe, let, let me, let me make this, let me make this suggestion.
First off, do we even have a second for his motion?
No.
No, we have a second for Don's motion.
Could we take those motion, could we take those one at a time?
Sure. That would be a friendly amendment. So the first one would be adding growers and processors. I was very encouraged-
I'll second that.
-by the, by the discussions on Wednesday, that we may see the benefit in that.
Any discussion on the, on the amendment?
Yeah, I think-
Well, I think that Joe has persuaded me to make a single motion without the word "safe and effective" and 500 to 1,000 in it. So we'll make them separately. I agree with that. That's prudent. Thank you for that.
Okay.
So essentially, the second, if I understand it, I'll amend my motion to say, "Add growers and processors," and you seconded that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we can discuss that.
All right. Now, is there a second? I mean, there was a second.
A second.
Now, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think we're, uh, we've had a zoning ordinance in play, we've had zoning in place for many, many years that allows agriculture in an industrial zone, okay? We have now, the state has made medical cannabis legal. It's an agricultural product, and it fits within the zoning. If we use the art, the argument that well, but it's marijuana, then we can use the argument, well, do you want to put strawberries in? Because they make strawberry wine at home. And then, you know, you got people doing that. You got, you have dandelions. I think we're getting in trouble if, uh, we add the, the specific thing called medical marijuana to an overlay zone, uh, for our zoning ordinance that allows agricultural products in an industrial zone.
I think the reason that was suggested by No Cannabis in Carroll at the Wednesday meeting, that these two words be added, or two uses be added, is because of the, the concept that we don't want to just ban the use of, of those things in Tonty Town, but we don't want to ban the export of those things to our neighboring towns. Is it okay for us to restrict the grow, uh, the grow, uh, the, the growers here, and then allow all that marijuana grown here to be shipped to Westminster to ruin the lives of young people in Westminster?
It's not being shipped anywhere.
And it's not ruining the lives of young people.
The proposals I heard about in the executive section said 43 people will be growing marijuana full-time if that facility that's currently at the Cannabis Commission-
But it's under state regulation. They're under state license.
Well, that's a lot of marijuana. That's truckloads, and I don't think that's-
How do you know? You know, you know everything.
43 people growing marijuana to be smoked as weed-
Two plants each.
Uh, uh, it's not in pill form, it's, it's smokeable marijuana.
Not necessarily.
And then to be shipped out of here in truckloads? That's not good for Carroll County.
Well, we, we can't, we can't act on supposition. The, the facts remain that state legislator, legislature legalized and is in planning to license growers of marijuana.
What's been the experience of-
And our zoning laws require us to allow that if it's a legal entity. No choice in the matter. Now, we can do exactly what we did with restricting the retailing of marijuana, and that is restricted to a special area that is less conducive to that type of business. Now, in my opinion, I don't vote, but in my opinion, that sounds like a good idea to me. But should we, would we be better off if we addressed what's before us, that is, the cannabis dispensary overlay zone? Get that done so that if this stuff ever becomes legal and able to be distributed, they can't do it here? And then introduce a separate piece of legislation that will have a similar effect on the growing of the product? I, again, that, that sounds like it would, it would be expeditious to me. Handle the businesses at hand, then come back with a separate ordinance that will restrict the growing of it, if that's what you want to do. But again, that, that's, that's, that's the council's decision.
And that would be the- We have a motion in second to add these two other provocative things, which is the growing of marijuana in Tonty Town, and the processing of marijuana in Tonty Town. I can't think of any reason we wouldn't want to amend this ordinance on this motion to add those two facilities with new zoning restrictions.
It's been motioned and seconded that we, that we do that, so.
And let me offer to you why.
What are, what are the-
I can tell you why, and the reason is this. If we simply attach it with the existing regulations here, legally, they could not open one within the city because of the size. None of the properties left over after we apply the 500-foot distance would be large enough for that, and that will immediately go to court. And as I said before, once they take it to court, severability clause or not, all of this becomes null until they make their decision. Which means it becomes open season.
I understand your point.
Okay. That's why I'm saying adding it to this is, is the wrong way.
We have to think about a specific proposal for this building up next to Westside.
We, we, we made a mistake last month-
Right.
-by, by reacting too quickly to a motion that was made to, uh, to an ordinance we adopted, and we had to come back and correct it this month. Now, in the absence of legal advice tonight, I think it would be prudent to act on the ordinance that we have before us, and then present different legislation to address what we're talking about in the amendment. That way, we make sure that we stay within the bounds of the law, and we don't get all this thrown out, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
Well, I, the reason I made the motion is because I think it would be great to have this oversight of the zoning commission on the growing, for example, marijuana in my town, in large quantities, or the processing plants that could be located next to City Hall. So those would be absent if we did, if you followed that advice. We should adopt the motion that I've made, and Joe seconded, to add growers and processors to provide that level of restriction on the, uh, on those, those onerous things coming to our town.
So my councilman, my question would be at this point, and I know I had spoken about the idea too, is, is presenting this as a different piece of legislation on Wednesday night. May I ask why you believe it is necessary to include it in this particular piece of legislation?
I don't normally win things on the council. If you enact the, uh, if you enact the bill without the protection against growers and processors, if you enact the, without the protection of 500 feet to 1,000 feet, without[1739.16] without the protection of five hundred feet to a thousand feet, without the removal of the language, "safe and effective", then it'll become a law and we'll not get another vote on it. That's why.
Oh, that's.
The times to vote on it is now before you enact a bad piece of legislation and then try to amend it.
We cannot enact legislation that would prevent this from happening. We can elect a legislation that will restrict it, not prevent it.
Zoning review of it. That's what this is. The zoning overlay would allow this proposal to go through the zoning process with their review with these new encouragements to apply these standards.
Actually, it has to come before council first.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what this is. It's a zoning overlay.
Right.
So it's not all about us doing it. It's about, uh, setting up a process that includes growers and processes that would go through that body's review as well.
That we can do on a separate piece of legislation.
Right.
I, I don't think we'll see it if we, if we don't do it now. We have a motion in second to do this thing to protect the citizens of the county. We ought to enact it.
All right, we're ready to take a vote on the motion?
On the, on the amendment to the.
The amendment.
On the amendment to the motion, I'm sorry.
To add growers and processors to the.
All right, all those in favor of, of Councilman Frazier's amendment to add the growers to this, uh, restriction, say aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
All right, I didn't count them.
Three, two.
Three, two?
Three, it's defeated.
Defeated, all right.
The second thing that, that, uh, was suggested by Joe was that I could add, take out the word "safe and effective" from the ordinance. Uh, a great deal of, was said in recent meetings about the idea that smokeable marijuana as a medical treatment is not a safe and effective use. It's still a Level One, uh, narcotic, um, at the federal level. Our, our sheriff and our state's attorney said that if we have a different justice department, not the Obama Justice Department, but a different justice department, that they will prosecute under the federal law, these facilities that grow large quantities of smokeable marijuana. So I think that the words "safe and effective", which are found in the ordinance.
Where in the ordinance do you find that, sir?
I was hoping you wouldn't ask that because I don't know. It's, you, it was read on Wednesday. I have to actually get it before me to.
It's the second paragraph of the first page.
Thank you, Joe. That's better.
Fourth line down.
I know it's in there. I have it circled in red when I get to the proper page. Thank you for that. Those, it says it's a sa- safe and effective treatment. I don't think that's a judgment of the council to make in a zoning overlay ordinance.
Councilman, I don't think it's "safe and effective" referring to the actual medical treatment itself. I think it's referring to the actual, the growing, the processing, and the dispensing, whether, not, whether the product itself is safe and effective.
I agree with you that, uh, you could read that sentence that way, but, uh, I don't believe that's accurate either. It's not a safe and effective treatment for, for, uh, any illness to grow large quantities of smokeable marijuana.
You don't believe?
Right, okay, let me.
Would you like to make a motion to amend the ordinance removing those words?
I would. I, that's exactly what I would like to do.
Is there a second? Very nothing, the motion dies for a second. Is there any other amendment you'd like to make on this?
My third item in the multiple motion was to increase the setback, but Councilman, uh, Lance has brought up a, uh, good point. If in fact, a large growing facility that would have forty-three employees could not be a thousand feet, and there would be no sites found in the city, uh, putting, uh, then, uh, that probably would be disqualifying. Thousand feet is a long distance. There's only limited, uh, numbers of industrial zones, and I take your point on that, uh, Councilman Lance.
If we were four times larger, I would say you're, you're on to something.
Yeah, if we increase that, five hundred feet is a, is a good number. I won't make that motion because of your concern about it. I think it's a correct concern.
Thank you, councilman.
All right, we do, we do have a motion in the second on the table to adopt ordinance twenty-one dash two thousand sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Opposed to it.
Okay. Next is for adoption.
Can I just say a word about explaining my vote? I think that any zoning ordinance that makes a legal place to grow, to grow or dispense or, or, uh, or sell, um, this is a, a bad thing for Tony Town. I think it's a bad thing for Tony Town, and by adopting an ordinance, you, you make it legal for certain locations for it to be. I think it's a crime, actually.
Cal, I, I just like to respond to that really quick. The reasoning for doing this was that we have nothing on the books right now which would regulate where a marijuana dispensary would operate. So under the laws that exist right now, they could go anywhere that they fit in that's outside of this overlay zone. And I think that's even more unconscionable than restricting where it can go.
Yeah, I'd like to commend Joe Vigliotti for, uh, Councilman Vigliotti for going to these planning commissions and working on this. I know that he's put a lot of effort into this.
Folks, this, this, this is groundbreaking legislation. It's something that every other town is going to have to do. And we're leading the way in order to protect our citizens, and I congratulate you for that decision. Next, we have ordinance twenty-two thou, twenty-two dash two thousand sixteen, Code of Conduct. Would anyone care to make a motion to introduce the Code of Conduct?
No, I move, I move we, uh, table that for, until next month.
I'll second that.
The corrections were not made.
Corrections were made.
That should have been made.
All right, we discussed questions. What corrections on Wednesday night, and they didn't appear in the, couldn't write the copy we had?
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on that further? All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. We have pending the, the annexation resolution twenty thousand, or two thousand sixteen oh one A, Ballinger Park, uh, annexation. We're waiting on the county's action before we bring that before the board. And the next item we have is the city manager's report. Henry, do you have something for us from, since Wednesday?
Not a whole lot. I, and you know, one of the questions that was asked, uh, was to get a cost for, uh, well, first of all, the sign is on order, and second of all. I'm sorry?
For the parking lot.
That's correct. Uh, and the cost to make the changes from a one hour to a two hour is a five hundred dollars. We have to lease a piece of equipment to do that. And then there's an additional, like, um, a dollar or so change labeling on, on the meters. So.
Henry, is it five hundred dollars per meter or just?
No, it's to lease a machine that'll allow us to make the change.
How flexible are those machines and what we can do with them?
I'm sorry?
How flexible are they and what we can do with them?
As far as time's concerned, they're pretty flexible with that aspect.
Are they as flexible as to say that from nine to five, it's one hour, and after that, it's two hours?
That I'm not sure of. I can check.
I did discuss this with one of the, uh, business people that were involved in the beginning. And he said, as far as he's concerned, the one hour should still stand. Makes it a lot more of a problem for residents in the building to come out every hour than it does every two hours to put money in the. He would, he would still like us to keep it at one, but, you know, that doesn't bother me either way. It's the reason it was done, for their request.
Right.
Not for somebody off the street.
Am I clear on what you, uh, you said, that it would be a five hundred dollar rental of a five hundred dollar piece of equipment?
That is correct.
Okay, that's not, that's not too expensive.
Henry, were you able to check into the price of a new parking sign?
No, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
I didn't check on the sign. I've ordered it.
Oh, okay.
I attended some of the.
I didn't think that was a question as to price.
Oh, all right.
I've attended several of the vendor meetings, and there's a great interest in, uh, making that parking lot more usable, and the longer, uh, the majority of people in that business, uh, local business meetings were eager and excited about the idea of increasing the parking limit to two hours. Uh, just a lot of people telling stories about, uh, having to go to the meter over and over and over and over and over and put money in it. Uh, the dog groomers and other people just talked to, if there's anything we could do to stop that. I think two hours is great, and it would help that lot be used more often.
But there is one in the street that is.
It is two hours on the street.
It is that. That's what is there.
We have a two-hour limit on the street.
Right, and there are no meters in the parking lot in the back and no meters at the police station?
I'm just talking about the lot.
Yeah, I know.
Next to the building here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the street's two hours, don't you?
Uh, well, I, I don't think the people of Tony Town know this, but when I was elected, I was given a little pass, number forty-three, that if I hang it in on my mirror, then I don't have to pay the parking.
In the city parking lot?
Only in official business.
On official.
On official business. Not every time, man.
Well, I wonder, I was wondering why it's permit number forty-three. Are there forty-three other people that have a permit, uh, like that not to pay the parking fees?
Unlikely, but that's for.
Why do they, they start numbering at forty and there's just three of them?
I have a feeling there's probably been a few of them that are gone now.
I think it's controversial. I hate to use it. I don't think I would get perks and privileges.
Well, that's for this parking lot here, not for the street, first off. I was informed that I would be ticketed if I parked out there. I parked in the city parking lot when I'm here at City Hall in official business. That's what it is.
Yeah, well, I've got a couple parking tickets lately.
I'm sorry.
I'm glad that the city police is, uh, monitoring those, that merchants are also.
I mean, you have the option of using that or not. I mean, it's entirely up to you. I mean, if you want to put money in there, put money in there.
There's a lot of merchants that are concerned about not enforcing the parking meters because, uh, the people live upstairs, residences, and they will leave cars in front of their businesses. They're very concerned about that.
You're saying their meters are not enforced?
I'm just telling you what I heard and talking to businesses.
You keep telling me you hear. Give me a name. I heard. I heard from a lot of people too.
Well, you weren't at those meetings of merchants, the one, the one up here at the, uh, at Trinity, but I was there for that, and I was there at the one that's held in the back.
Mr. Mayor, can we move on, please?
Yes, please. Is there any other questions for Henry?
Well, I have one question. Is there any direction to go with this or are we holding off?
Any, anybody care to make a motion to increase the time on the city lot meter, uh, from one hour to two hour?
I'll make that motion. I think that's the sense of the businesses in town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
I gotta see hands on that. I didn't pick it up.
Okay.
All those in favor of increasing it to two hours, raise your hands. Just all opposed, two hours. So it's the other three, okay.
No, Angelo abstained.
You got a tie.
It's a tie, sir.
You got a tie.
So I get to break it.
You get to break it.
Gee, this is a first.
You get to feel important tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I don't often get to do this.
Savor the moment.
Someone take a picture.
What is your call on that?
I vote to change it to two hours.
I do too. That's great. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the help.
Any questions on the departmental report? Okay, not hearing anything. Jay's not here, but is there any questions that we could relay to Jay from the legal report? Very nothing? Moving into unfinished business, we've already handled the item about parking for downtown businesses. Any other unfinished business? Very nothing, moving into new business. Monthly financial report. Anyone care to make a motion to approve the financial report?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I, I just want to say I remain concerned by the amount of money we're spending for legal advice. There's another ten thousand dollars in this particular financial report, and I think that I'm going to vote against it. I don't agree with drafting unconstitutional legislation and paying somebody a hundred dollars an hour to do it.
Hundred and twenty-five an hour.
Twenty-five.
Actually, that.
Is that per month or is that? Thank you.
What you have in here is three months.
Thank you. That's, it's not ten thousand dollars a month.
And councilman, it's not just the drafting of the legislation, it's the attending of the meetings and the research and the things that.
I don't think you need an attorney unless you need attorney's advice.
And the things that we direct him to do. For example, at our, our meeting, I think it was last month, we directed him to, to see about adding definitions to the, to campaign finance. And that was an added cost that he had to bear.
Yes, just based on the discussions.
Directed him to draft all this stinky legislation, so I don't want to pay him for that.
Okay. Any further discussion on the monthly financial report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed to it.
You got the wrong one. You talked about the next one. That's the wrong one. Okay, give, give what the. Monthly pay, accounts payable is the one you're opposed to. Next comes the monthly accounts payable. Everyone, um, anyone who want to make a motion to approve the accounts payable?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the accounts payable?
I think we just did.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I'm opposed to that.
Okay, good.
Just for a little clarification on that, the monthly financial report is basically a budgetary report. The accounts payable report are those bills that we're going to pay. Just so we all on the same page.
Well, you asked me on Wednesday whether I would be in favor of not paying a certain check. Then my follow-up question to that was, uh, when we receive these reports, aren't these checks already cut? They have check numbers.
This is, this is, we're talking about the accounts payable.
Yeah, but my question is, is that true or not?
You can vote against it if you like.
No, my question is, when, when we're given a report that has a check number on it, hasn't that check already been cut and cashed?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I was trying to establish.
Very well.
All right.
But, okay, we understand what the, the difference between the two are now?
Yes.
All right.
Next is the, uh, under new businesses, a reduction of the Meadowbrook line of credit. The recommendations in your packet. Anyone care to make a motion to?
I'll move to reduce the line of credit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carry. Let's go to council member reports. Let's start on Angelo's end tonight. Don, do you have any reports for us?
Yes, I do. I received a number of emails from people who got their water bill. They are very upset about it. I have, uh, one person has written me and said it would be better and more financially advantageous for us to pack up and move out of Tony Town rather than pay an extra four to six hundred dollars average quarterly water bill. A six hundred dollar quarterly water bill ends up being twenty-four hundred dollars a year, which is more than my property taxes and more than my mortgage payment. We, uh, we are waving the white flag if the council will not lower water bills, and my family is going to move out of town. I'm getting no response from my ongoing appeals to lower the water rate. That's from a, a family on, uh, on, uh, Keenan Street. I have another person came to my home and delivered the water bill and asked me to fight for a lower water bill, and I'm so disgusted with the council today for increasing the water bill, or introducing a bill that would increase the water bill three and a half percent. I don't matter what the Davenport says, I'm disgusted with the, the shell game of shifting these costs so that you can spend money in the general fund. I think it's a shell game. I think it's reprehensible.
Uh, okay, is there any other comments, Don?
I don't have anything to report on Rexon Park except we had a wonderful event, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, we gave a nice talk and, uh, and, um, the county commissioner, Mr. Lance, threw out the first pitch at their baseball opening day, so it was a good day.
Okay, I asked, how did the meeting go with the, uh, the lady from the State Parks?
Oh, for Ballinger.
Oh, no.
Ballinger Park. How'd that go?
Park meeting when, uh, they toured the area.
I'd like to call, uh, Mr. Haynes, you were at that meeting.
Oh, you weren't there?
He, he had to, he's on the Rexon Park, forward with me.
Uh, Don could not be there that day, so he asked me to represent him in his stead, uh, Daniel Grand Drive. Uh, the park meeting, it went rather well. We consulted with a woman from the National Parks Association to, uh, discuss possible revenue interests in developing the Ballinger area. Uh, she told us that she herself could not get us the money apparently, which is the answer that Bob Mitchell wanted, but she could help us pursue, uh, possible areas in which we could get the revenue to raise for developing Ballinger Park. But she came with me, uh, Bob Mitchell and Mr. Whitebreak, and we toured the area. She said it was very promising. There was a lot that you could do with it. So just a very general nature park. The only issue now is just getting the money for it, so.
Thank you. Please identify yourself for the video.
I did, I did.
He did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, must, must not heard that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Daniel.
All right. Diane, do you have anything for us?
Uh, the, uh, low-flow toilet initiative is still alive and well. We have some money. We have some additional toilets. We just need people to request them.
Very good. That's been a very successful program.
It, it was a successful program, and, um, I'd just like to comment to, to, uh, Councilman Frazier about the folks with the water bill. I was quite frankly surprised that we didn't have people really knocking down the door for this. If they are really interested in lowering their water bills, they should be interested in doing some of the things that it takes to wa, to lower the bill. And this is one thing that they can do.
Well, I'm calling on people, uh, council.
You know, we had a few people who requested them and didn't even bother to pick them up. So we had to, like, put those back in the fold.
Right, I think conservation is one way to lower your water bill, but, but keeping the rates, uh, under control is the other way to do it.
Okay, uh, Councilman Lance, do you have any comments?
I have nothing additional. The, the planning commission, as you remember on Wednesday, had sponsored the, uh, overlay for medicinal cannabis dispensaries. And that was really the primary takeaway from that. There was some other talk regarding site waivers and things that were not passed, and I believe that's, that's appropriate, but nonetheless, there's really nothing new from planning commission this month. But nonetheless, there's really nothing new from planning commission this month.
Okay. Councilman Bigliotti?
Two very brief things this evening, first, last month, Tawny Town for the Arts had its inaugural art show, and I want to thank Mayor Jim and Councilman Wance for attending that, as well as our city attorney. It was a fantastic success, all the people who I spoke to who attended this are thrilled that there is something artistic now in town, and they are really looking forward to future events, and they were very glad to see, you know, the mayor and council had a presence at this event. Next month, Emily Graham of the Red Door Boutique is putting together a cleanup day, May 7th. I can email more details about this later, I don't have them with me at the moment, but the idea is to get as many people together as possible to do a trash pickup day in town. And that's certainly something I think that, you know, would be awesome for all of us to participate in if we can, and that's it this month.
That sounds like a good project, that was something we did years ago and never redid, but I think it's time to do it again, so I'm excited about that.
Interestingly enough, you bring that up, you did that the first year that I moved here, I was about nine or 10 years old. And Nancy came over, my mom had a craft shop on the corner called The Country Mouse, I'm not sure if you remember, and I was there helping her set up the store, and Nancy walks into the store and she says, hey, Val, we want to borrow your son Joe to come sweep the sidewalks, so she stuck her broom in my hand, and that was the-
See, that was your first introduction to city service.
Yep, that was it.
Wonderful.
And it went downhill from there.
Very good. Just a few comments for the benefit of all, today is Saini Di, the legislature ends today, hopefully. And unfortunately, our highway user bill was modified greatly in the Senate and then kind of delayed in the House, and there was a call that came out today that we should write Chairman Bravé and Speaker Bush and try to get it moving. I don't know whether that had any effect or not, but it doesn't, at this late date, it doesn't appear that it's going to come through like we had hoped. So that's disappointing.
It's a tragedy.
Yep, that's disappointing. So we'll know more about that tomorrow, I'm sure. We have the final legislative committee meeting on Wednesday, and I'm sure I'll get all the details when I get out for that. Baseball season got kicked off, I'm sorry I couldn't make that, but I'm glad we're involved. It was interesting, the history contest winner today was in and accepted his gift card for answering the correct question in the Tawny Town record, and his mom happens to be the fundraising chairperson for the Tawny Town Baseball Association. She's selling discount cards, show them one, Henry. These are discount cards for businesses all around town that you can purchase for $10 to support the baseball program here, youth baseball program here at Tawny Town, and receive discounts at many different merchants.
I just noticed, we better hurry because it expires the 30th.
Oh, dear.
The 30th?
Oh, wow.
Of April?
30th of January, 17th.
Oh.
Oh, okay, 17th. I was just taken by the first, the month, I went, holy muck.
Anyway, we have agreed to serve as a retail outlet for these, it's not covered by any kind of overlay zoning or anything like that. But if you would care to purchase one of these cards, we have them available to city office, they're only $10 and for a great cause.
And just, there's a lot of businesses in town that are supporting this. McDonald's, you get one, buy one, get one, Subway, 50 cent off, Grandma Gem's, 20 percent off, Tony's, 10 percent, Sweet Frog. I gotta get better glasses, huh? 15 percent off, Dunkin' Donuts, JP, the Alano's J&amp;P, Stonehouse, Original Pizza, Broken Spoke, IHOP, Hair by Michelle. Let me see, well, anyway, Fortune Star, Pizza Hut, Bearwood House, Legends Cafe, it's a lot of businesses are supporting this.
Very good, so I encourage you to take advantage of this, contact the youth baseball person or our city office. Now, we have a few minutes left, so I'll entertain any questions that anyone has from the audience, would anyone care to make any comments?
Marvin Flickinger. Councilman Frazier, you mentioned that you got several hundred votes in the last election, and you promised those people that you were going to lower their water and sewer rates.
Four to one.
You haven't got that accomplished.
Four to one, four to one.
Now, most people, when they vote, they vote for their pocketbooks, they thought you were going to allow them to keep some money in their pocket, it didn't work. Now, most of those people, I would say, don't know what an enterprise fund is, fund. They don't know at all what's involved in the water and sewer rates, it causes them to be the way they are. We are certainly not the highest in Carroll County. Anyone that doesn't believe that, go to New Windsor and see what New Windsor's paying. I just read two weeks ago where there's a municipality in Carroll County, I forgot which one it is, that's in the process of raising their water rates. It just came out in the paper, the county is getting ready to raise their water rates. So all these jurisdictions have the same problem, their expenses is going up, so our water and sewer rates have to go up, anybody's water and sewer rates. So I thank these people that you promised to lower their sewer, water and sewer rates, you're going to be mighty disappointed.
Well, I just wanted to remind you that I read an email from constituents talking about packing up and moving out of the town if we don't do something to lower water and sewer rates, it's more than their mortgage.
More than mortgage? Okay, please, just, don't fire.
Thank you, Keith Whalen, 521 Keenan Street, for the record. I do have a question about the water bill, the water hydrant meter, can someone explain that to me? And the way I see on my current bill, I have water and sewer, and now this proposal is for $16.38 per 1,000 gallons for what's called a water hydrant meter. And my concern is that it says $16.38, it's on the proposal that I picked up here.
Oh, okay.
So if someone can explain that, is my water bill only going up 3.5 percent, or is it going up nearly 33 percent?
I think what you picked up was Councilman's, is that right, your proposal?
I got ordinance 24-2016.
I had said that we could achieve water sewer parity in this budget year where sewer rates were comparable to water rates, but that was rejected as a nonstarter on this city council.
Well, let me, I can explain that, because I've just got, really had to look at it. If, for, you are using, in other words, an industry or a company that wants to fill up a tank, like, let's say you're a landscaper and you have a tank that you want to fill up, and you use a hydrant, there's a rate for that, and that's not for homes.
How do you police that?
They have to come get a meter from us.
They can't just open the hydrant.
Yeah.
Yes, they can, I retired from the fire department, they certainly can, with all due respect, they can, there's no lock on it, they can pull up. It's insignificant, other than the fact that that could be tons of water that is picked up out of every location, all you need is a hydrant wrench and a truck, I've seen people do it, I've seen pool companies do it over there in Meadowbrook. Maybe if I see it, I should probably-
Oh, please do.
That's theft.
Please do, because that's illegal.
Absolutely, it's theft.
It's illegal, right.
Understand.
That was defined as a big problem in the county, I guess maybe two years ago, it was a big thing about just that thing, people coming and stealing water. Yeah, certainly, if anybody sees anybody stealing water or stealing anything, let us know about it. Anyone else care to make a comment?
Good evening, Robin Frazier, Bentley Street. On Wednesday, I asked questions about whether you were going to do some definitions on this removal of elected officials. Did we add any definitions? Okay, well, let me just remind you then, that, first of all, the removal of elected officials is ignoring the citizens' choice of who their representative is, and it's not just for convicted criminal activity, which all of us can understand, if someone was convicted of a crime, but it includes being absent three consecutive meetings without being excused by a majority vote of the city council. We haven't, we didn't define what a meeting is, so I'm not sure if that's council meetings, or other meetings in between, or what, so that's pretty subjective. The B is just cause, it talks about, again, the majority vote of the council making a decision based on whether you violated any federal, state, county, city law or code, which I don't think any of you could list those, none of us could, another subjective thing. And the, there's attorney general opinions that say that you can't sit as a judicial body if you're biased. And if you've already decided that someone had unexcused missing meetings, or they had just cause because they violated some code which you picked on them for, then you would sit to remove them from office, and I think that you're going to have big time problems with that. And I'm really sorry that you didn't define words, anytime you, words matter. And anytime you're writing some kind of legislation, you ought to be defining your words. I also think you're ignoring the cries of the people that cannot afford their water bills, and you have shifted money from the general fund to the utility fund, which frees up general fund dollars, and I'm not sure how all of those dollars were spent, but it's the same thing as raising taxes. All you did was shift the money into the utility fund, and you raised the water and sewer bills in a year when you didn't have to, because the revenues coming in equal the revenues going out, and the only difference is shifting those portions of people's salaries into the water sewer bill. You didn't do it last year, you didn't do it the year before, you didn't even talk about it, and I think you probably hadn't thought about it, because if you had, you would have told Commissioner, I mean, Councilman Frazier, that he had to add that $329 to whatever proposal he had. $1,000, because that's, you know, how much he was going to have to come up with so that you didn't have to subsidize it. So I think you just came up with that one, there's no reason why you have to do it this year, why not give the people a break? Zero percent going up this year, add some in next year, wait until some of the homes are built and see how much more revenue you have, and add them a little at a time, I think it's outrageous, you had an opportunity to listen to the people who are hurting and to do something about it this year, and you didn't do it, you ignored it, and not only did you ignore it, but you raised their taxes. You raised their taxes by shifting the money from general funds to the water funds and not reducing the general funds. That added $329,000 to your general funds that you spent, and that's raising taxes.
Now, you're wrong, I mean, everything you've said is completely erroneous.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are, sorry.
What happened to the $329,000? If you shifted it from the, if you were going to spend it in your general funds, and now you're spending in your water funds, did you not-
The general-
Open up the general funds?
I'll say this one more time, I've said this a dozen times.
Yes, saying it doesn't make it true.
Well, certainly it does. Because it's the facts. We cannot subsidize the water and sewer department.
You did last year, you did the year before, you did the year before that.
Because we had no choice.
Well, you didn't have to do it this year, you could wait one more year, or maybe two, maybe see what your revenues are going to be. Don't you care that the people are hurting? I don't think you do.
We've already discussed this.
Okay, well, I'll move to my next, my next topic.
No, I don't want to hear anymore, sit down, you've had enough time.
Well, then you put too much stuff on your agenda, because there's things to talk about that are important, and you ought to hear from the people. You're not, once again, you're ignoring the people, you ignore the people.
Anyone else care to make a comment? All right, hearing nothing, next thing that they ask for is a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I would like new business, I have a motion to make. You've just adopted an ordinance-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Under new business.
We've already gone through-
We're already passing a new business, Councilman.
Well, I'm going to make a motion anyway. I want to move that my trip to the Philippines was an excused absence, because the new law you said that said, I handed out the agenda, told everybody I was going to go to the Philippines, I'm executive director of Agora Evangelism, we do three to four international trips a year for the growth of the gospel, I notified everybody, but now you have to have a vote of the council in order to make that excused absence.
No, I think you're missing the point.
I told everybody, I gave my plane reservations, and I want to make a motion-
I think as long as we know that you're going to be gone, it's perfectly fine.
You declare that an excused absence, because I gave you plenty of notice on it, and you can't, I was absent for the month of January meeting, because of my-
Nobody questioned that, did they?
But this new law you said that only a majority of the council can excuse an absence.
That wasn't even in effect when you were-
It's in effect as of tonight, because you passed this stinker law that's going to result in nothing but chaos in the future. So I want to make a motion that that's an excused absence for Councilman Frazier, because I notified you in time, will somebody second that for me?
Who said it wasn't? Nobody said it wasn't, I'm just kidding.
Because you add, it's not dumb, because you just enacted a law that said, and she just read it to you, that a majority of the council has to excuse an absence.
It's not retroactive.
Effective, but tonight, I suppose, if you pass that stupid law.
You missed three months ago, not tonight.
Yeah, well, I want to call that an excused absence.
Mr. Mayor, this is an appropriate motion, I ask that you dismiss it.
I just don't, there's no credibility based on that.
Is that an excused absence, Mr. Mayor, then, I gave everybody notice?
As far as I'm concerned, it is, but it doesn't have any relevance all along.
What's the council think about that, was I excused on that?
It's not, it's not relevant to anything that we're doing.
It's relevant to this new law you passed.
It's not, did you miss three meetings in a row, Councilman?
No, no, but this would be one, strike one for Councilman Frazier.
No, it's, it's in a row, that was January, we're not sitting here nitpicking this.
I want to be excused for that absence since I told you all.
It won't make a difference if you're excused or not, and secondly, you did not give us notice.
Makes a difference now that you enacted this law.
It's three consecutive meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adjournment.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, so carried.
You should excuse my absence by a vote of the council.
Another one in the books. Don, you can rest assured, anything you do to further the gospel, anything you do to further the gospel, you'll get my- It's three consecutive meetings.
Am I excused for that absence or not?
It doesn't pertain.